Good afternoon. Welcome to our session. And today is, what, the ninth? February 9th already. Welcome to the session of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. And sorry, we're starting a few minutes behind. I was at the SOARWIB workforce annual meeting. It was on the program, and they got started a little late. And so even though it was down the street, I got caught by every red light that could ever exist. So I'm glad that we're here, able to get started. We will start our meeting, as we always do, in silent prayer. And certainly, there's so many things to pray about, and so many people suffering. Recently, heard about the murder-suicide situation that happened in Avondale, and we heard about that family, I think maybe a month before, two months before, and just sad all the way around. So just want to keep the community and families in prayer, as well as all that need prayer throughout Hamilton County. Amen. Now we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We, I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes. All right. And now we will open it up for, we have, yeah, we do have one comment card. And we also have a proclamation. So let's do the proclamation first. Do you all have a copy? We have a proclamation for National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Week. And I will read some of it. Whereas in 1999, the need to mobilize and specifically express the disproportionate effect that HIV/AIDS was having on the black community was formulated into the National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day. And whereas every year since then, cities, towns, and communities all over the country have recognized this date during Black History Month. And whereas currently, in 2023, Hamilton County has been awarded funds to see an end to HIV epidemic in the county, this means that we expect to see less than 20 infections in the county by the year 2030. Black people make up 50% of the new infections in Hamilton County in 2022. The need for the advocacy and awareness in the black community is pivotal. Whereas February 7th, 2023, Equitas Health organized a community event and called to actions with Hamilton County Public Health, University of Cincinnati, Caracol, and many other partner organizations to unify, discuss, and create a plan to eliminate epidemic. The event took place at Esoteric Brewery at 918 East Macmillan in Cincinnati, Ohio, and was moderated by the national HIV activist Phil Wilson, founder of the Black AIDS Institute. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognize the service, dedication, and commitment of Equitas Health in organizing for National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day. Be it therefore proclaim that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby proclaim Monday, February 6th through Friday, February 10th, 2023, as National Black HIV Awareness Week. And it is signed by all of the commissioners. And we can clap to that. With that, I'd like to open it up to Vice President Drehouse and Commissioner Dumas, if you would like to say a word before we present the proclamation.
Well, thank you, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, and thank you for being here. This is so important. The work is so important. And I know it's been going on for years, not always at a popular time for the kind of work that you do. So thank you for, I had a chance to talk to you before the meeting and learn a bit, a little bit more about all the partnerships that are happening in our community to reduce the impact of HIV/AIDS, especially in the black community, which is overrepresented in the numbers when it comes to HIV/AIDS. So just want to thank you for your work and congratulations on the recognition.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to ditto what was already said, absolutely a disproportionate number of African-Americans are impacted by this. In any way that we can recognize it, it's great that we did. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this awareness and organizing and telling us, hey, we need to do this. And I think this might be the first time from the county type of proclamation with this. Please introduce yourself and if you'd like to say some words.
Yes, so my name is Kibek, and I work with Equitas Health.
Pull your mic up just a little bit.
Right here.
Yes.
My name is Kibek. I work with Equitas Health as the Clinical Prevention Program's Senior Manager. And I would just like to say, in honor of Equitas Health, thank you very much for this proclamation. We realized very long ago that in order to stop HIV from spreading, it is a collaborative effort. And through support of the county and through the support of the city, we are well on our way through collaboration, through innovative technology, and through reaching folks where they are. So I just want to say thank you very much. And with all of us collaborating on this effort, we are sure by 2030 to reduce HIV new infections by 90%. And so I wanted to say it is an honor for us to be here. It is an honor for us to receive this proclamation. And again, I want to say thank you very much for bringing attention to such a good need that affects so many people in our communities.
Thank you. And we'll come around, take a photo, and present you the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
And he wants to talk about restaurant relief.
Let me start out by saying this. I got to say this. I really do. This idea is not my idea. I never thought about doing the restaurant show. I never thought about doing, going back on TV. Not really. Not at 70 years old. But I want to thank two people, Mr. Alicia Reese, the president, and Mr. Dumas. Reason why is because the ideas that you have makes money. A lot of ideas that you guys have put together actually puts money in the budget. And that's why I kind of got the idea from. So it wasn't for me. A lot of this, I got it from you. And I just want to say thank you for that. And what we're doing now is, yesterday I was in production, we got to, you got to see this thing. It's hot. It's real. I had to save myself, it's hot. And they editing it now, and we're going to try to get it to you hopefully before the next week ends. And then we have all the paper for you so that you guys can read it. So, you know, I was looking at the paper here. You know how many advertisements in here for restaurants are in here? None. This was the foundation of restaurants in the cities. These papers, right here. The internet ain't going to give you that much. It's just not. Because it's not centrally located to the area. And the food costs has hit the roof. If these people ain't been buying bulk food for years and years and years, they can't survive. And what we're going to do is, like I got another project that we're working on, is we're going to put money back into the budget with this. They're going to, we take care of them, they're going to take care of us. And that's going to be the major thing. And so I just wanted to say that it's coming. And I'm really happy with what we did yesterday. It's pretty nice. These guys are good, really good. So you guys are going to be happy to see it, okay? Thanks.
All right. Well, congratulations. Thank you so much, keeping us updated on it. Now we will go to comments and motions from Commissioners. I'm going to start with Vice President Drehouse to go ahead and present yours.
Thank you. Just a couple of things today. As we all know, there is a new president/CEO of UC Health. His name is Corey Shaw, and he was out at the 513 Relief Bus launch out of Corinthian Baptist Church. But there was a reception for him, welcoming him to the Cincinnati area. And so I went to that, you know, I welcomed him on behalf of the Commission to the area and told him we look forward to his partnership. UC Health has been such a great partner of us in so many ways. So that was kind of a nice opportunity. Also, last week I mentioned the World Teen Mental Wellness Day. That is on March 2nd this year, 2023. And BI3 is giving out grants to high schools that want to do something, plan, create, lead activities in their schools to recognize Mental Wellness Day in schools to do two things. One is to make sure that students know where the resources are in case they are experiencing issues related to mental health, but also to help reduce the stigma related to mental health issues. And so the deadline was this week, but it's been extended. And that's why I'm talking about it again. The deadline has been extended to February 18th. And again, this is up to $500 per high school to plan, create, and lead activities related to the World Teen Mental Wellness Day in March. So I just wanted to put that back out there. We did have a little event over at Ursula High School. Two of the students, Kinsey Sullivan and Camille Roman, are members of the Commission on Women and Girls. And so St. Ursula has gotten, or is intended to get one of these grants and do this. And so I'm very proud of the two young ladies who are on the Commission on Women and Girls who are helping launch that effort at St. Ursula. But St. Ursula was already doing a lot in this space, and I applaud them for that. They've got quite a bit going on at the school to address some of the needs of their students. I attended the One Ohio meeting yesterday in Columbus. I am the representative for Region 2. The conversations continue. The expectation is that those dollars from One Ohio will be available to the local foundations in the fall. I will tell you, we are all anxious to get those dollars on the ground, and so we've asked that that timeline be accelerated. I'm on the grant committee, and so many of us in the room were on the grant committee and asking that we start to ramp this effort up so we can see those dollars sooner than later in the community. Because the Region 2 Board, and we're all members of that board, has been working very hard to understand the priorities and make sure that when those dollars become available, we'll be ready to go and have those hit the ground. So that was yesterday. And then I did want to just compliment the administration, Jeff Aludo in particular. The Hamilton County Employee Advisory Committee survey is out. I got one. I don't know if everybody got one. I'm sure we all did. But this is an effort of the Employee Advisory Committee to get an understanding of what the employees in Hamilton County see as their top priorities. And so I applaud the effort. It's, I'm excited to see what the results are going to be, maybe mentioning things like childcare facility, on the grounds. I know we're all interested in seeing something like that happen. I'm interested to see if the employee base is fired up about that as we are. But other things that are included there, kind of the culture, the organization, where we should be headed, and I really think it's a great effort. So thank you, Jeff, for your work on that. And also thank you to the Employee Advisory Committee for launching that this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas, before I go to Commissioner Dumas, the extension of those grants, is there any way, maybe through our website or what have you, so we can put that out there that it has been extended, or maybe we already have, but all of us sharing that? I think that's a big opportunity for these schools.
Yeah, sure. So there is a flyer, and Mary Mauney has entered the room. She's the Program Coordinator for the Commission on Women and Girls. Mary, could you send the flyer about the Mental Health Awareness Day to all the Commissioners with the extended deadline on there so that we can push it out to our constituency? Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things. I want to extend personally prayers for Mr. Curtis Fuller. We say Curtis, but it's spelled C-O-U-R, Cordus. And I think he just lets us get away with it. So if you happen to be watching, I'm sending my prayers to you, and I'm sure our other Commissioners are also. I attended a regional safety webinar last week for the state, just looking at safety in general and what we're doing and how we can improve in that. Wanted to make a comment as it relates to boards and commissions. I had a couple vacancies from my office, did finally fill the TID vacancy. But it'll be, I'm looking at the possibility of, as we fill our vacancies, not always getting the expert in that field, but getting a, and I call him a layperson, that can provide some, some, just a new aspect, a new view on things. So experts are perfect, and they work out well, but just to get from the general public. And so that's what I did with the TID, even though this person has a very strong advocacy for transportation. One to talk about, I have so much to talk about. How about we do Black History? We know that Black History is this month, it's been mentioned earlier. And in an effort to celebrate Black History, we will be presenting a couple people that we want to recognize individually for Black History. That'll be coming up next week through our president. But I just wanted to mention that in January, we recognized Dr. Odell Marino Owens to change the building, the name of the Coroner's Office to Dr. Odell Marino Owens Corner Building. And so that being said, Bishop, you have a, we took the resolution that we all passed, and if you can just display it for everybody, and we put it in a, yeah, let them see it, and then we'll turn around so you can get on camera.
Go to the speaker area, so we're limited in our camera angles.
Well, yeah, I want the public to see it also. Yeah.
Are we, there we go.
There you go. Okay. And so we just, no tax money would you use in doing this? But we got frame, a frame, a nice frame together, and Bishop Hilton will be presenting that to the family, the resolution. And then hopefully very soon, we will be able to see the signage on the building. So thank you so much for that.
Can I ask a question while you're at that point to the administrator? What's the timeline on this? I know that when the stadium changed the name, I mean, we couldn't even, we didn't even vote on it. I mean, it was letters, they even did a story. Letters are down, and a new name was up in 24 hours. What is the status of, and I don't even know if those were our workers over there. I know we pay for facility workers at the NFL stadium. It went, I had a big thing. Paul Brown is down. Paycor is up. And they were, I mean, we couldn't even get to our cars quick enough before that. So what are we doing with this?
We're working on a couple of things. There's going to be some signage at the entryway, which will be able to happen a lot quicker. There's also signage on the building. There's also signage on the building itself that is gonna be changed. That's gonna take a little bit more time because we're gonna have to, uh, actually, um, do some work on the facade itself. But the, the new signage, the temporary signage, I think within the next couple of months should be able to, to happen like right there, um, as you, as you pull into the, uh, into the facility.
Yeah, can we get a timeline on that? I just, it just, to me, I would think that the NFL stadium, stadium would be harder than a building. And a couple of months for the temporary sign, this is out front. I mean, they were hitting those, I don't know who they hired. Uh, I don't know if they were.
You don't know when they started either.
Were they, were they our workers? They got started before we can get out the meeting. Can we?
I can get you, I can get you an exact timeline from Facilities, Commissioner.
Yeah, we'd like to, I think we originally said we wanted it moving in 30 days. So please, I'd like to, it would've been great to have it during Black History Month. And, um, so anyway, sorry about that, I wanted, but would you please report back to us, uh, at the next meeting? What, what is the date? Cause we're only talking about a few letters. Um, so hopefully.
Commissioners, I'll get you something right after the meeting from Facilities. It won't take that long.
Thank you so much, Jeff. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's great, we need to know, we needed some timelines. I also wanted to mention, um, the earthquake that occurred in Turkey and Syria. Um, the serious earthquake that last time I looked, it was 11,000 people that were dead. And now it's up to 20,000. So our prayers go out, um, to that country, to both of those countries. So sad. Okay, I'm gonna move along to, um, I had a couple initiatives, uh, that started in January. Beyond Your Imagination, BYI is one, through JFS. And it is beyond my imagination. Director Patton, I, I wrote him a note and I said, can we, you know, can we start putting stuff on the calendar? And he sent me the calendar packed with, um, events. And let me tell for the people that are watching, these are foster children or adoptive children families. Um, and my thought was that they should be able to do the same things that other children are doing and go the same places that other, uh, families are going. And so he has a wonderful, uh, calendar for this month and I'm just so excited about that. Uh, in addition, another initiative, um, was a small grants initiative. Um, as, uh, Madam President sometimes mentions about, when we start talking about doing something, then the next quarter is over and it's over. So March starts, you know, that's the third month of the year. So I'm asking administration to have, um, the applications ready to go uh, for the jurisdictions outside of the city of Cincinnati to apply for any small events that they're doing in their neighborhood, in their township, in their villages. I know for the large grant, uh, that we have, you have to have an impact, economic impact of $40 million. Uh, so there are only a couple that can, can do that. But for this small grant is that you're trying to encourage, uh, the community to keep their heads up. A mo-, uh, more, uh, emotional support for the community and to undergird the costs that they have to, uh, provide a festival or something like that for their community. So, um, I'm hoping March the first, that we can have applications ready to go on, uh, our website for the small grants application. And, um, lastly, the Inspire applications. Inspire is, uh, and my colleagues, uh, agreed, we put it in the, in our budget, uh, for any small groups, neighborhood, community groups that are helping young people, uh, for drill teams, sports teams, whatever it may be. Maybe you can't afford your registration fee, but to keep the hope of those, uh, adults that are out there helping young people, that we will help you. Um, and the maximum is $5,000. And the applications for the Inspire, uh, needs to go out like now too, March the first. I'm hoping that those go out. I know administration is looking at the application, should not be, uh, very hard to do uh, as it relates to the standard of accepts, acceptance, uh, for the application. So as you listen to me, just get ready, cause March the first, we're gonna have something out, uh, for you guys. So just spread the word. And for the Inspire initiative, I am hiring a part-time person to come in to facilitate that entire program. And they will be out in the community observing these groups to validate their, not only their existence, but impact that they are having on young people. So that will, and I hope to get them started by March the first. So finally, to go back to Black History Month, I oftentimes quote one of my favorite authors, um, and, uh, just a dynamic man, Martin Luther King, and I just have a couple quotes. And the first quote I wanted to say is, "The quality, not the longevity of one's life is what is important." I just love people that can put stuff in a little, a couple words. And the second one, just for you to think about. An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of humanity. And I thought that was very, I liked it anyway. But I have one other, another author that I really like. It says, "If you try to talk to someone and no one wants to listen, try talking to yourself. At least you'll have a listening ear." And that is by me. So I thought I would share that. So don't worry about people not listening to you, just do your thing and it'll work out. That's all I had.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Commissioner. I appreciate that. Um, couple things that, uh, wanted to highlight. Um, as I mentioned earlier, today I was at the, uh, Southwest Workforce called SOIRWIB. It's a big, long name. It's a lot of people because it's a very important issue. And, uh, was with them today at the Union Terminal. They had their annual meeting and, um, was very happy to be there, um, representing our county and what we're doing, the partnership that they have with, uh, Jobs and Family Services, who is basically running the program in some regards, uh, won the contract to ru-, uh, run Ohio Means Jobs. I want to thank the executive director, uh, Jason Ashbrook, uh, and him, his whole board doing a great job. It's a, it's a really good board and, uh, doing some good things. But we got honored for also our other partnerships, not just running Ohio Means Jobs. But, uh, I was thankful to receive the Leadership Award of, of making an impact for, uh, drastic type of changes as looking at doing things differently. So they honored our 513 Relief Bus partnership that we did with them. Um, we did it at Ohio Means Jobs, but we also went out to Wenton Terrace. And I remember going to the bus that day and I pull up, I get out and a person runs out the door. "I got the job, I got the job." And he was so excited through this partnership that we had with our workforce board. Um, and it just almost brought me to tears. This gentleman, he said, "I got the job, I got to go tell my wife, I got the job." And those are the kinds of things that, um, we want to do in these type of partnerships. So want to, um, thank them for the award and all the work that they have to do. Uh, today I was out with the 513 Relief Bus. I was out with it earlier, I went stopped by Colrain Township. Uh, we're going everywhere, we're in 10 locations this month. Um, very good, uh, feedback from, uh, the bus. The health services that are on there, I don't think we, uh, hit that enough, but we're gonna hit it a lot more now. Because like someone said, I could come here and I didn't have to have a co-pay. And I was able to get, uh, some of the screenings. And, uh, I, we were in Lincoln Heights and I didn't even know they had a screening that screens your circulation to show if you are, um, someone who might have amputation if you don't get moving. And that was something, I didn't know, a lot of people were getting those, uh, as well. It's American Heart Disease Month as well, and we've got free blood pressure checks. Today we're out at New Prospect Baptist Church until 3:00 PM. And Pastor Lynch got to go up on the bus and everything and they had a very good, steady crowd of people. Um, I just want to say that people still need connectivity to the resources that this board and the administration has made available to folks. And people were just thanking us because they said, wow, either they didn't know all this or either, uh, it wasn't as convenient to get to. And they appreciate the relationship building that we're doing between our county, uh, employees and the people who we serve. So it was just a phenomenal, uh, day that they had a turnout, good turnout I saw in Colrain. Uh, good turnout that we had in Roseland at New Prospect, uh, Baptist Church. And a lot of people were getting their blood pressure checked, et cetera. We also are gonna do, uh, we got vaccinations that'll be back with the bus, uh, at the Blue Ash Stop. Uh, people want to know where we're going and what's being offered, they can go to 513relief.org. Uh, I will say this again, our county is leading. I watched the State of the Union and the president speaking and he talks about all of the resources. And one of the things I thought, I said, wow, Washington can release the resources, but if you don't have, um, a county board like we have, that's gonna work to get the resources to the people, then the people begin to say, I never, I never saw those resources. And these resources that we've used came from the federal government and we have used it to reinvest in the people. So when I see it, they say headline, oh, this costs this much. We are putting money, investing back in the people, that's what the money was for. And so I'm so excited about what we have done. I haven't seen anything like that around the country and we're gonna be working to get this information out. I'm asking the administrator, get it out to HUD, what we're doing. Get it out to, uh, all of the, the health, uh, in Washington. Get it out to the Washington folks. Our lobbyists in Washington should be getting out what we're doing and how great of a job we're doing so that when other resources become available, we become a model to bring those resources back to our citizens here in, uh, Hamilton County. We'll be, uh, there's a full list, I think we go to Blue Ash next. And we have a lot of partners on there. Uh, when I was in Colrain, there was a couple that showed up with a, all they had was a suitcase. Said, "We don't know where to turn, what to do." They went up on the bus, Talbert House worked with them. And my understanding, when they left out of there, they had a place to go. So, and they were crying and just, it's, it's very emotional, but it's so many people that need help. Then I had some people say, hey, I don't need the economic help, but can I get my blood pressure checked too? Yes, it's open to all Hamilton County citizens, no matter what your income level is. We're trying to save you with your health and we're trying to also save you with your economic situation, uh, as well. So wanted to highlight that, um, because there's been some emotional, emotional situations. Um, New Prospect, there was a lady that said, "I've been working on this job for 18 years. They just got rid of my whole division. Now my mortgage is behind, I've never been behind." Thank God for y'all, I went in here and this person, Jobs and Family Services, has connected me. There was another woman, I gotta share these stories. There was another woman and we just went to praying, um, because she went into tears and said, "I've never had to ask for help in my whole life. My husband died of COVID and everything has been going downhill ever since." Husband died of COVID, car went out, can't pay to fix it. Then they came to her, her gas and electric got cut off, water was cut off, didn't know anywhere to go. And I want to say this to Director Patton and his team. She said, "But when I came out of here," and she started shaking, tears started flowing. She said, "The lady in there hugged me, said, 'We gonna get you together.'" And she said, "Nobody, everywhere I turned, nobody could help me. 1-800 numbers, computers, people supposed to call me back." She said, "I'm in there with no lights and no water right now at the house." And went into tears. So this is the kind of stuff that's really out there. I mean, these aren't just people been, you know, begging, these people been paying taxes, but hit a hard time. Um, and so she's still mourning her husband, who died of COVID. And we were able to also help get some counseling to help her out as well. So, uh, that's what our staff is seeing out there and in, that's what we're doing and that's what we mean when we say One Hamilton County, not trying to leave anybody behind. So just wanted to say, commend the work of, uh, the team that's out there, uh, Jobs and Family Services, Ayesha Howard and Trevina Adams and everybody just running it, our driver, everything. Everybody is in it to help the people. Um, the gentleman representing Talbert House indicated to me that he's been working with Talbert House, but he had never seen the people that he's seeing now. And so this gives them a way to reach out and connect with people that they have not connected with. So, um, just want to say good work, uh, Jeff, the administration, good work on, on this. Um, also, as, um, our, um, as Commissioner Dumas has indicated, it is Black History Month. And, um, we are going to be doing several things, uh, as our commission. One is we have the 16th where we'll be honoring, uh, African-American historic figures, people in the community who've been working and doing things, but never really been recognized. And we'll be having that on the 16th and people are wel-, uh, welcome to join us. Um, and each of us, Vice President Dre House, myself, and Commissioner Dumas will select some folks and they will be, uh, honored. In addition to that, on February 21st, we're having a Black Business Day at the county. The first ever Black Business Day. We've had a disparity study, we've been, made some progress on some areas, still need more progress to be made. Uh, but that we'll be doing with Mr. Robert Bell. We will hopefully have a resolution, I'm asking both of my colleagues to, uh, look at the resolution. Uh, these are the things that were presented to us from the report of the disparity study. But we like to try to take some action. We're gonna have, any of you out there, you're a black-owned business entrepreneur, come on up, we want to get to know you. We'll have our procurement folks here, you'll get to meet them face to face. You'll get to meet our administrators face to face. Uh, and we also will have some folks that have gotten contracts with us, some new things based on what this board has been pushing to make sure that we open up the process. Uh, the issue is very important, we divert, we collect diverse taxes. Taxes is coming up, nobody's exempt. They don't ask you for certification when taxes come up. And I always say, why can't we use what IRS uses? Cause for some reason they say you are a business when it's time to pay taxes. But then when it's time to get the contracts, they say, well, you got to prove that you are indeed a business. Um, so since we collect ta-, diverse taxes, our goal has always been to open up the process so we don't have taxation without participation. So we will have Black Business Day celebration on the 21st. Uh, and we will have, um, hopefully a resolution that we all agree to, that we can take some action. And we will also have black businesses here to meet our folks through Robert Bell and his team. So that will be, uh, very, I think, big for us, uh, as well. Um, so wanted to highlight those things. One thing I wanted to put on for my colleagues and we can take a look at, as we end Black, uh, History Month and we're looking at taking our meetings sometimes out, I would like to see if we would have, uh, agreement that we would have our meeting the last Thursday of February at the, one of the first black cities in America, Lincoln Heights. And that's the day that we were gonna have the, uh, administrator report back anyway on what's going on with the gun range from a financial standpoint. And I just think it would be good if we could do that. We don't have to answer today, but I just put that out there. Uh, if not, we'll, we'll stay here. But on that day, I thought would be good to go out, uh, to that. A lot of people don't recognize, we just, oh, it's just Lincoln Heights, they're one of the first black cities. They were a city, first black cities in America, uh, in the state of Ohio. And they're right here in our county, we've done a lot, uh, with them. Uh, but I think the, taking that out because that's the date that, uh, we was have a report back on the gun range, the financial deck as it relates to that. Um, and keeping in on that particular issue, I just want to say that, uh, our administration and of course, all of us been working very hard on it. And I just wanted to, uh, highlight one of the things I think is very important. Uh, this project is not about, you know, credit, because there's so many people that would have to get credit for it. It takes so many people to move it. But where I am as president, in my State of the County address, I said, "We gotta get this done." And we are at a place where we can get it done, it's just a financial component. Now, after we get the finance, of course, we gotta meet and do all those, then that, then that group can continue to do that. But I think we have a, uh, obligation to get over the hump. And, uh, Commissioner Dumas has said, if it was in any other neighborhood, it would be moving quickly. And what I'm trying to get to is one set of rules and standards. One set of rules and standards. And I think it's appropriate in Black History Month to talk about that. We talk about the history and we talk about, you know, people that came before. One of the things has been that we, we don't sometimes, most of the time, have the same set of rules. When it comes to African-Americans, we got a different set of rules. And when I look at different projects, I just told you, you got the Bingo Stadium and they got that, those, those words are down and Paycor is up in 24 hours. they got that, those, those words are down and Pay Corps is up in 24 hours. Dr. Odell Owens, we done passed it, it's a couple months, we'll see what we can do. Over here, we go to a lax Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And they say, oh, man, it's a lot of money. But then when you got two stadiums at a billion dollars, that's not a lot of money. When you got a garage, it's 70 million dollars, nobody's questioning. When you, then they say, well, can't you just put everything black in the Freedom Center? But you don't say that when you got a football and a baseball stadium and a soccer stadium. And then you have all these other buildings, each person got their own building. One of the things for Black History Month is that we play the game by one set of rules. And that's what I'm pushing for. The gun range, we got to, we looking and we've got to look at it and we got to keep studying in it. We, all we can do is turn the dirt. We put black projects in what I call a layaway program. Put a little bit and keep meeting on it, keep meeting on it. And then in a few weeks, I, I was asked to go to a meeting, I guess all of us will, each individually, at the same time, you want me to meet about the convention district? And they need 10 million dollars to get started. So you get that? They need to, there's 10 million to get started with the convention center and then I got 11 million dollar gap that can complete the gun range. So how does this become more important than getting this done? So we have to move these things with one set of rules and I believe that the gun range has to be moved to a right now program. Since I've been down here, for example, when you do the Bingo's lease, it's 20 years. It doesn't matter who gets elected. They got a contract for 20 years. But when you do something for African Americans, we got to keep meeting on it, it's a conversation. And where I'm at now is we're at the finish line, let's cross it. And I've asked the administrator to, to look at creative financing, creative financing to get this done. It's only 11 million dollars to get this thing done. And I would have loved to have had it done in Black History Month to show some action. So that's what I wanted to put is nothing personal, nothing I do is ever personal. It really isn't. I don't live in Lincoln Heights. My, I'm not hearing the shots, but there are people that I represent are. And why should they have to live like that? Why is their project not as important as a Cincinnati downtown project? Give me one set of rules. And we've got to have a contract, an MOU saying that they're gonna move out of there. We don't even have a MOU. So those are the things that, where I am on this project, you know, I'm not interested in the popularity, I'm interested in fighting for the people. And I think all of us, we have stepped up and stepped out. This project will be on county property and I think we need to look at another creative way to get it done. And I think I'm confident that we have the, the talent, the wheel to get it done, but I'm not supportive of a layaway program. I remember growing up, my grandma, she put something in layaway, she didn't have enough money, put it in layaway and then something else came up and she said, well, I just gotta lose my deposit because I don't have enough money to get the product. And then the product went back on the shelf. I don't want the gun range to be having, I don't want to be a 2024, 2025, still talking about this gun range. So that's where I am on that. But I would like to ask my colleagues to look at doing our, our meeting there on the 25th and our chief of staff can get the details, but I wanted to put that out as part, as we end our Black History Month celebration. So that's all that I have. I would ask the administrator.
Madam President.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I just want to respond.
Yes, Vice President.
Yeah, so we used to take our meetings out once a month. I think it's a great idea because I think it gives the opportunity to the communities that we meet in to brag a little bit about what they're doing and tell us in partnership how the county has maybe played a part in that. Lincoln Heights is going to be a good example of that. I, I do want to be careful though about, it, so the, the gun range issue has been an issue for closer to 70 years from, you know, from when, when it all started. And, and it is complicated and I've, I know I've said this before, but I don't want to, people to have the impression that we are not working as hard as we possibly can to get this thing moved. There are a lot of moving parts. I have attended every single meeting for the last two and a half years related to this project with people from Colrain Township, with state representatives, with the people from the city, with the people from Woodlawn and Lincoln Heights and Evendale, trying to pull all these pieces together. And there is no desire to slow walk this project from anybody, from any of us, from any of them. And so I don't want to discredit the work that's happened by suggesting it's on a delay. There is no delay, it's the financial stack that's got, that has taken some time to put together and we're not quite finished yet. And I know we're all working different angles to try to make this happen, but I, and I don't mean to suggest that, I, I just don't want to suggest that anybody, including this administration, is slow walking this. Because from my experience, everybody is anxious to get earth turned. The engineers in the room, he's been very good to work with and making sure that we've got the, the room to expand this thing. Colrain Township, we've, you know, we had to have a public meeting out there and, and they have been working with us. So we're all moving in the same direction, it's just, and I agree with you, I mean, we're, we're trying to finish out the financial stack. I know the city is looking at their budget to see if they can find more dollars. We're looking at our budget to see if we can find more dollars. We've approached the state and we're waiting to hear back and, and some private entities, but I, I just, we're all anxious to get this done. And so, and we're all working in partnership. And so I just did want to, I think it's a great idea to go out to Lincoln Heights and, and bring them, you know, back, the, the folks from the Heights Movement and from Lincoln Heights, the mayor in particular, have been very active in this space. And so to give them this update, I think will be very helpful. But from where I sit, we're all trying to move as quickly as we can to, to get this thing moved.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. And I wanted to clarify, I'm not, meetings and I want to identify for people, the way we work, we can't go to private meetings together. It's only one commissioner. Once the one commissioner walks in the room, that's what they are. I'm trying to bring it out in the open so all three commissioners, because we voted on the 15 million, can be a part of it. Now, I'm not interested in, you know, I'm not discrediting the work or anything, I think it's fantastic. Where I am saying is that since I've been down here, we just saw an example of it with Dr. Odell Owens. Bengals went from Paul Brown to Pay Corps in 24 hours. Dr. Odell Owens, we voted on it, but we talking about months for just the temporary sign. Same thing we could use for other projects. We bonding other projects. We bonding garages and different things when it's our projects. But on here, we don't have it. Now I'm asked to have a meeting next week and we've been working together, city and county working. This has nothing to do with just the city because we have multiple cities that we have to work with. And I'm being asked about a 10 million dollars that will be coming, it was in the report from our administrator, possibly 10 million dollars to put toward getting the convention district moving. And as I've indicated, I'm for the hotel. But 10 million dollars in a, in a work plan and we're looking at how to be creatively financed. And that's cool, we can work on those things, but how does, how does, how do we work on that for 10 million? And then we got a gap over here for 10 million. And what I'm saying is when I see projects, not just this one, but when I see things for African Americans, since we're in Black History Month, what I've seen since I've been down here and then all of us is, is, you know, we're trying to change, we've been changing things. But what I've seen is we move at speed when it's a downtown project. We find the money when it's a downtown Cincinnati project. And I'm all for progress. But then when we come over to something like this or any other thing in the black community, we always have to move to meetings, we're working on it, it's down the road. We just saw it with Dr. Odell Owens, months before you get a temporary sign, 24 hours before we get Pay Corps sign up on the stadium. And we can't say, well, we don't have nothing to do with, we own the stadium. We could've, we could've, somebody over there knew that, that the, the letters was going down. We paid for the folks' work over there. Somebody knew the letters was going down. So I'm just trying to move, I have nothing against the meeting, there'll have to be more meetings. I'm trying to close the financial gap and I believe we have it. That's all I'm saying. I'm just trying to close the financial gap, whether it's the state, but it's gotta be, if it's not in the state budget, it's gonna take a lot of time. If we got to apply for something, that's gonna take time. And I just don't understand, even with the, even with the issue of environment, everybody run, the environment, I ain't seen nobody out here screaming that this is an environmental issue. And if it was somebody else, and I hate to feel that way, but that's the truth, it would be moving fast. Now how are we moving fast with other environmental issues and we running past this one? And then every time we say, let's move, we got to, when it comes to something for the black, and this ain't just for the black community, these are babies. I don't care what color they are, if they're in some other neighborhood, but we tend to say it's very complicated. It can't be more complicated than this convention district and we're moving, they asked me to meet on Monday. They asked me to meet on Monday about possibly 10 million dollars in another financing program and they say, we got to move quick. And all I'm saying is, let's move quick on the other thing. So that's just where I am. I'm not discrediting all the meetings and all the people pulled together, I think it's fantastic. And once we announce the, the money, somebody get up and read all those names and I don't even have to be in the names. Where I'm at now is I'm looking for 10 million dollars, 11 million dollars. And if we got 10 to give to 3CDC, then I want to put that 10 toward this. And if we don't, I want to see a creative financing plan. I mean, we own the land, we'll own the building, you know, we need to, we need to be just as creative as we are with these garages and different things. And so that's where I'm at. And, and what I see is, you know, criticism on everything that happens for the black community, not from you or, or, but I'm saying out in the public. And I don't see the same situation when we're doing non-things that affect African Americans. And they pay taxes too, we gotta be clear, they pay taxes too, they're not exempt. So all I wanted to clarify that, it's not a this or that, or I'm not here to say nobody hasn't been working, everybody's been working, I think it's fantastic. We're now down to the money. We're down to now, we need 11 million dollars and I'm trying to find who can do it or can we do it? Can we be as creative as we are with other projects that we've had? And can we move as quick as we move with other projects that have been even more complicated? So I just want to be clear, I don't want to just turn the dirt. I want to close it out. And I don't want to move forward with something that has a deficit. And I asked the administrator if he could present us maybe some other options, maybe it's something else out there that we might be able to, you know, move forward. And I think all of us are, like you said, trying to find, I'm only on the financial gap, that's all, that's the only part that I'm on. And seeing if we could close it out. Madam Commissioner.
Just a couple comments. I know, you know, the gun range is not on the agenda, but it needs to be discussed as you have. And so it's a, you know, I just heard the issue of the gun range has been going on for 70 years. That's a little bit of a misnomer. 70 years is about when the gun range was established. I actually think it was about 67 years. So it goes back to what you were saying, it really doesn't matter a lot who discussed every year about this. And I'm, I'm embarrassed myself. I started when I came in 19 and talked about it, this is emergency, we gotta do this, now it's 23. So I, I'm, I can't do it myself, of course, but I thought we would be farther along, we're farther along than we have been. History will tell when this discussion of actively closing this gun range came about, that's not hard to find out. But I agree with you about creative financing and we need to, and I'm not gonna bring up strategy and stuff, I'm sure I'll mention it to the administrator, but just have a media campaign for profit, nonprofit businesses, people, as I said last time, they want to, individuals want to give. So I would look forward to that before we look at other financial entities that may be about bond financing and things like that. But there are people that are waiting to give, we just need to let them know how they can give and we need to move on it. And so I've talked about, you've talked, everybody's talked about it. And so we just, like I said last time, talk is cheap, just bring the money. And we talk about moving dirt, it takes more than 2 million to move dirt. So it's gonna take an exorbitant amount just to move the dirt around, something like 17 million, I think the administrator and I were talking about. I'm getting lower, I know, so you can't. But we just need to move forward and hopefully we, this will be something in the past, we won't even have to talk about it. But we're just starting to really move forward and talk about getting rid of it, even though other discussions have happened, we've never been this far before. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Administrator, do you have any byleaves and comments?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just, one quick comment and then three, three byleaves today. So did you, I know, I think Michelle Balls is, is here, I think I saw her. I did, I wanted to throw out a congratulations. I know that there is an organization out there called Waste 360, which is a, a private industry trade association in, in, throughout the world that's responsible for being one of the leading trade associations in the solid waste and recycling field. One of the employees over at Resource Hamilton County, or I still call it the Solid Waste Management District, Tony Staubach was named to the 40 Under 40 Group for Waste 360. So it's a, a really prestigious designation. When we do, when myself and our HR office and Bridget Doherty do our onboarding every other week with county staff, we always talk to them about wanting to make sure that they are experts here, seen as experts here in, in the community and in the organization, but also experts nationwide and globally if possible. And we've got a lot of expertise in this organization, a lot of people who are the best of the best at what they do right here in Hamilton County. Tony's one of those, so I just wanted to congratulate Tony. So Michelle, if you could please pass that along for us to Tony.
Wait a minute, let's give a big round of applause. You got the best, congratulations.
Couple of byleave, three byleave items. First item, byleave item number one, this is a, this is resolution number P 023-23. This is an agreement with Shaw Contract Flooring Services, Spectra Contract Flooring. This is for a flooring and contract, flooring and carpeting project at Paul Brown Stadium. It's 432,331, it's a state term contract. This, and as the board is aware from past years, typically when the football season ends, we start to, when we, when we see byleaves related to the stadiums or typically when the stadium ends, as, as the stadium staff is, is starting to ramp up projects and any project that runs the risk of potentially missing deadlines, they typically bring as a byleave. And in recent years, as the Bengals season has extended further than it has in the past, we see a little bit more of this where we've now lost a couple of weeks maybe to where we would have in the past. And so they want to bring it forward as a byleave just to make sure we can get the project rolling as quickly as possible and in time for next season. So with that, Commissioners, I recommend the passage of byleave number one, again, the contract with Shaw Contract Flooring Services. This is for the flooring in the East and West Club Lounges at 432,331.
Uh, thank you. And I'll open up for a question, but I wanted to highlight something, just kinda, you know, one of the things I wanted to make sure that we don't do anything in silos, that's one of my, my goals, and we put everything in context of one pot. But I wanted to highlight just what we were just talking about. So 432,421, which we're gonna support, that we're able to get flooring in the clubhouse, we're able to move, take action on it. And that's kinda what we've been talking about. So when people say we're not doing anything in the stadium, we are doing some things, we're upgrading, we, number of things that come by, but 432,421 and we're gonna take action so they can get moving on it. Any questions, Vice President?
No questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, I make a motion to approve byleave one.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Byleave number two is a RFP, a, a contract related to RFP 039-22. This relates to an agreement with Harris Local Government Solutions and the Hamilton County Recorder's Land Records Management System. I believe that we are joined today, I think, but it, there, the pillar has cursed me again, Recorder Crowley is here, who can speak to this. This is something that I think the recorder can remark, we've been working on for, for some time and I know this is a really great project for the Recorder's office. So I'll turn, with no further ado, turn it over to Recorder Crowley.
Welcome, Mr. Recorder.
Thank you, may I?
Yes, please.
So first, thank you, Mr. Ludo, County Administrator, and Budget Director John Brugan, we have been working on.
Pull the microphone closer to you, need to be able to hear you. Thank you. Pull the microphone closer, they need to be able to hear you, thank you.
Sorry about that. We have been working on this for some time. Our current system is 20-plus years old, it's run its course. The technology is not only outdated, but there are some aspects of it that are obsolete, specifically with our cash sharing system. And then in addition, this home system was created with a consultant agency 20-plus years ago. And we maintain a contract with one of those consultants to maintain this system, and that individual will be retiring here shortly. So this is kind of a necessity for our office. This is in line with our budget request. If you recall, we removed two individuals from the tech fund and put them back onto the payroll. They were on the payroll prior to 2017, but because of lean budgetary times, they were put into the tech fund. Because of the necessity of this land management record system, we had removed them pursuant to our budget request so that we could fund this. The expectation is that we will pay this through our tech fund. This has been vetted thoroughly, as you can tell, we put this out for public bid, we had a number of demos, we also got community input specifically from Swalta, the Southwest Ohio Land Title Agency. This is in line with concerns about security, we will still be able to maintain a high level of security with our data. And in addition, we're excited that this is going to improve not only our office, but other offices as well. We will be able to increase e-recording vendors, which will improve the efficiency, speed and accuracy of our department. It will also improve the accuracy because what we do now is we actually do type in grant or grantee. This new system will have the technology to actually pull that from the document into the system. We ask that you approve it, and we thank you so much for your time. So, and I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you, thank you for being here and explaining that. Open it up, Vice President Drehouse?
No questions, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adumas?
Thank you, Madam President, just wanted to comment and compliment you on your financial acuity, I should say, because when you came for your budget, I believe, I want to say you reduced it, but I know you did not increase it when you came and asked for your budget.
That's correct. The initial expectation for this system, when we first began vetting this project back in November of 2021, the first year I was in office, the expectation for the cost of a system like this would be $2.7 million. The bid is now below $1 million for five years. And so it's that fiscal responsibility that we are very keenly aware of.
Absolutely.
And again, we appreciate the support from the board and the Commissioners for putting those two individuals back into the general fund, so we could accomplish this through the tech fund. In addition, I also want to point out that this is actually the standard practice throughout Ohio, most recorders' offices utilize that tech fund for a current, up-to-date land management record system.
And I certainly appreciate your creative financing to do it within your department, so thanks.
All right, thank you, I make a motion to approve byleave two.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and byleave number three before you is a resolution authorizing amended lease agreement with HC 237 William Howard Taft Road and the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for the Hamilton County Tuberculosis Control Unit located at 237 William Howard Taft. This agreement runs from, we'll take it, 2024 and 2025 at a 2.25% escalator. It also provides a six-month termination for both parties. The Health Commissioner has requested this with a sense of urgency to make sure that as that building goes through some ownership changes, that there is stability for their lease at the facility.
Okay, thank you, Vice President Drehouse, any questions? Commissioner Adumas?
Thank you, Madam President. What numbers are we talking about financially, how much money is that?
I can find the lease number for you, Commissioner, if you give me one second here. I know what it used to be, but I want to make sure I'm accurate here. The total, the total dollar amount of the agreement is not to exceed 363,810.
Thank you. That's all I have. Great, I'll make a motion to approve byleave number three.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, no further byleaves.
Madam Chair?
Yes, if I could just ask a question, I noticed on byleave one, there was not, the amount was not listed on byleave one. In an effort of transparency, whoever comes in to get this agenda, the 432,000 is not on this, if we could include it when we do it the next time?
Certainly, and I don't think we have it on, I don't know that we have it on?
We don't.
On either, I'd say on two and three as well.
Right, it's to be on all of them.
Yeah, so we can add that.
We add that to the record?
Yes, when they put in byleave, since they are a late item, there is no place for them to put the money, so we can hand put that in from now on.
Okay. Well, we want them to, let them know or something before you go running, because that's another way you put a byleave in and the money never show up. So we got to fix that, we got to figure that out.
Sure, we can put that in.
Yeah, I don't want a handwritten thing, I want the people, I mean, I know what you're saying, but we want it in here before we, just so it's in the record and everybody can see it, et cetera.
Yeah, we can get it in there for the agenda, we just have to do it in a little bit different way with the process, but we.
Yes, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much, that was a good, um, did I already pass all these? Yes, I did. One thing I wanted to get an update from you, Mr. Aludo, about the downstairs, I know we had, it's really dark, and I mentioned that, what's the timeline of these elevators, really, I mean, these elevators really need to, what's the deadline on that?
So there was an initial, I think the bid has been, different bids have been awarded for that project, I think there is some work that's going to start in April of this year, I believe, and will run through the fall, I believe, maybe some of it bleed into next year as well, so it'll happen in phases, but work's going to start in April.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to go to the consent agenda, Mr. Aludo, oh no, we're going to the regular agenda, I'm sorry, we're going to have our engineer, the very popular engineer, come on up, Mr. Beck?
Good afternoon, just four items for you today. The first three are all agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation. Item number one is a resolution authorizing an extension and amendments for the mowing of a portion of Ronald Reagan Highway between I-275 and US 27. That portion of Ronald Reagan Highway is county maintained, but since ODOT has a contract to mow all across county, we partner with them on that, they mow it and invoice us. This would allow us to extend that contract for another two years, effective July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2025. Item number two is a resolution authorizing an extension and amendment for the repair of cable guardrail on that same portion of Ronald Reagan Highway. That has cable guardrail down the center, since that's a divided highway. That is not something that the Engineers' Office typically handles, so we do contract with ODOT in case that gets hit, they come out and take care of the repairs. That extension would be through, from July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2025, with a maximum amount of $50,000. I did go back and look at what we've done the past three years, and two of the last three years, we spent nothing, and one year we spent $5,000. So typically, unless there's a, an accident out there, we don't need to use that. The third one is the extension of the current snow and ice agreement with ODOT for the various state routes that the County Engineers' Office does snow and ice operations for the state. That will again extend the contract from July 1st of this year through June 30th of 2025. Item number four is a resolution allowing us to go to bid on Project 502-204, which is Sheed, Hanley, Weiss and Gaines Road Improvements. This is located in Colrain Township. We have a proposed bid opening date of March 9th. The engineers estimate is $1.8 million. This is a project where we've got a grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission to cover 50% of the project, so $900,000 will be coming from OPWC, and the remainder will be coming out of permissive auto funds.
Thank you, I do have a question, though, on here it has 000, but then when you presented it, there is some, even though it's coming out of a restricted.
It's setting up the agreement for a maximum amount, but we're not spending it until it's invoiced.
Okay, so then it'll come back.
Correct.
Got it, got it. Open it up, Vice President Drehouse, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Adumas?
No questions.
Awesome, I make a motion to approve items one through four.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we go to the consent items, I wanted to ask my colleagues, I'd like to move up item number six to the regular agenda. This is a resolution authorizing approval of the 2022 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies for Hamilton County, and I know that Harry is here and Mark and some folks, I had asked the Administrator, it's been a little while since we approved and we all had some input, we put a couple of different things, but I just thought if we could move that item up to the regular agenda, if you don't mind, and have them come forward and talk about what's, what's in here, what's different, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. That's right, I do have a brief presentation today on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs for short. Before I get into that, two things. One, as you mentioned, Harry Blanton's here to help me with any questions that come up today, and I do want to give kudos to Alloy's staff for leading, compiling this document and revising it. They did it in partnership with County Planning and Development, as well as the Community Building Institute, and I think the document's in real good shape for your approval today. The other thing is that just quickly remind everyone exactly what the SEDs is, and it's kind of as it sounds, essentially a compendium of strategies for how the county can grow and improve the economy moving forward, in terms of increasing population, expanding businesses, expanding the tax base. It represents a vision for how we want to see the county grow moving forward, and there is a wide range of action plan recommendations to help guide investment decisions moving forward. Beyond all that, more of a kind of procedural item is that the SEDs also allows the county and all of the other jurisdictions and geographies that it pertains to, allows them to remain, to be eligible for federal economic development administration grants, which the county applies for, for time to time, and so do many other stakeholders in the region. So it's important for that reason as well, that we, that we adopt an update to this plan. So with that, I will get into the timeline. The last one of these was adopted in 2014 with some minor updates included in 2017. The work on this document began in 2019, and a lot of different stages in that effort, a lot of community meetings, reaching out to a lot of stakeholders, poring over the census data sets. As you can see, it was about a two-year effort, leading us up to when the initial draft was presented in September 2021. The draft was well received by this board, but there was some feedback received, mainly in terms of there's some revisions needed in light of COVID, like a million other things, COVID kind of wrecked the schedule on this and kind of charted a new course as well, so there was some revisions needed for COVID. Also, the county's continued and expanded emphasis on diversity, equity, inclusion. The Commissioners wanted to see that built into the document a little bit more. So after that initial presentation in September 2021, those changes were made and a revised draft was presented in March 2022. And that was the last time we spoke to you on this, so you're correct that it has been some time. But we're here today with some additional revisions, and I'll go over those in just a second, but it is on your agenda day to adopt this final version, and we'll begin, they've already been distributed, but we'll redistribute executive summaries and kind of continue to build momentum for implementation of the plan. So getting into those revisions that you mentioned, so I have them kind of categorized in two different groups here. The first, related to that first presentation back in September, as I said, the feedback was mainly along the lines of COVID and DEI. So just going through that action plan, those action plan recommendations that I mentioned, and there are several categories, one being human development, there was recommendations added related to the digital vibe with broadband provision, and then also local governments as well as businesses needing to be more focused on working from home and what that means to our economy. So recommendations were added along those lines. Fiscal development, we also included revisions to make sure that we were properly capturing the consequences of the new Federal Infrastructure Act that had passed at the time, that we're still making our way through now, also some new county funding programs that came online. And then finally, one maybe more specific thing that was touched on was the nuanced approach needed for retail development post-COVID, since that's kind of a sector of commercial real estate that has maybe changed the most, even though a lot has changed. Then under business development, there was a couple of organizations that were left out that were added, as well as some funding sources that are useful to small businesses. So we expanded the, the action item recommendations for business development as well. All of that was presented to you back in March 2022, and then we received some additional feedback at that point. One was that, and this can be kind of a more difficult and time-consuming process than you may initially think, but going through, going back through the entirety of the document and updating all the data with the most recent census data, that was completed. The other more specific thing was the feedback to look into amateur sports tourism as some, as an area we may need recommendations under for business development, and that was added to this document as well. So in a nutshell, updating the data and expanding our recommendations to kind of capture the totality of what we want to achieve in the coming years as a county. So those were the revisions, and that's all I have today, but like I said, we're able to answer any questions.
And the document is a lot of pages, we didn't take out anything, we just added some of these things.
Yes.
To update them for?
Yes.
Okay, to make sure that we're, if there's federal funds out there, we're eligible to try to get them.
This will ensure that, yes.
Thank you, Vice President Drehouse?
Yeah, thank you for your work on this, and remind us who the partners are?
Alloy led the process, they have done that, I imagine for some time, back when this was last updated, as well as this one. They worked closely with County Planning and Development, maybe specifically the Community Planning Team, and then Community Building Institute was another partner. But I don't have the list in front of me unfortunately, but there was dozens of stakeholders interviewed for this, a lot of participation in compiling the recommendations in this document, those were the main partners.
Yeah, appreciate that, and appreciate you being responsive to some of the items that we brought forward the last time you were here talking about this issue. I think it's a, I feel like it's probably a better document when it relates to COVID and the census numbers and the other things that you mentioned, so thank you for doing the updates and bringing it forward to us at this time, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Adumas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just one quick question, once we approve this, if it's
The next plan would be like in two years, in other words, what I'm saying, if we come up, think of something else next week, unless it's really critical, the next plan would be in two weeks, I mean, in two years.
Nothing precludes the county and working with Alloy to add more minor revisions to this, I believe, but at any time, the guidance from the federal EDA is to work on a substantial update every five years, but we're able to address this document in the meantime as well. Harry, do you have anything to add to that? Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, Mark's right, the EDA recommends a five-year update, but we have decided.
Yes, Mark's right, the EDA recommends a five-year update, but we have decided every year we will take a look at it to make sure if there's anything that needs to be updated, we will do that. We would never change the recommendations without bringing it before you. We just change like data or names or things like that, but if we're going to change the recommendations, we'll bring it to you every five years.
Great, thank you. That's all I have. So yeah, thank you. I would make a motion to adopt item number six.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to the consent agenda, I asked Administrator Ludo to walk us through and highlight those that have financial implications.
Thank you, Commissioners, I will do so. Just a quick update on the informational item that was requested. I got some additional information from facilities on the downstairs lobby project. As I said, it is an April start date. Unfortunately, the elevator equipment is being impacted by a global supply chain issue, as we know a lot of stuff is, but they are expected still to begin with that in the fall. So we'll be making progress this year on all of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see, so the consent agenda, we'll obviously skip item number six, but item number five is a resolution related to the use of credit cards for various activities for Hamilton County Administration and the Commissioners, skipping over number six, which the Board just approved. Resolution number seven is a resolution approving the expenditure of funds with the Economics Center for Education, UC Center for Economics and Education Research on behalf of the Metropolitan Sewer District for affordability analysis for the Metropolitan Sewer District. Item number eight is authorizing the purchase of three Ford Interceptor Explorer SUVs on behalf of County Adult Probation, $437,388. Resolution number nine is a resolution relating to the acceptance of purchase orders for Hamilton County, is a large amount of purchase orders, as you will note, Commissioners, $48,430,542. The vast majority of those relate to the establishment of purchase orders for our levy work plans. So for instance, $26 million for the senior services levy through the Council on Aging, $17.5 million with the University of Cincinnati Hospital for the indigent care levy, so $43 million of that, of that 48 relates to those two levy contracts. We also have an agreement for $2 million for the startup and expansion of the Mobile Crisis Unit. We have legal services for MSD at 1.15 million, so all of that told is about 90% of that 48 million. Item number 10, we have a resolution authorizing 12023 Dodge Ram Cab and Chassis, this is a utility bucket lift to allow for higher building work at 219,305. Then we have multiple grants to award related to environmental services. I know that Michelle Baltz is here, so with the Board's deference, I might just defer to Michelle, if Michelle is willing to walk through these. These are all good news, ways that we are helping to support communities and nonprofit organizations to help with the Board's waste reduction and environmental goal, particularly some of these in the food waste and organics area, which I know the Commissioners have all expressed an interest in. So, Michelle?
Absolutely, so this is a large, one-time grant. Typically, we budget 75 to 100,000 for our grant programs. This was $500,000 that the Policy Committee voted for last year to put in a one-time large-impact grant, and they were up to $100,000 request. So this is the largest grant that we've ever done, so we really beefed up our review process and our requirements for what financial information they bring us. We had a five-member Grant Review Committee team, two from resource staff, and then three from outside. I want to thank Mr. Robert Bell for being part of that, and we had eight criteria that the committee was reviewing or giving points for. And so I'll just quickly go over the projects. The City of Wyoming, it is for equipment to continue and improve their leaf composting program, which might not sound that exciting, but it really is a large-volume program. The second is for Easter Seals, or better known as Building Value. They have a really neat construction job training program, and they're using the grant funds to help with that program, to bring trainees out to deconstruction sites, and then also for, to create a lumber processing facility. So you may not know this, but older buildings actually have really high-quality lumber in them, that's actually better than the lumber that you can buy at, you know, New. And so this will allow them to take that lumber, process it, so that people can use it in construction again. The other one is Food for the Soul, which operates in northern Hamilton County. They serve many underserved communities. They're a food rescue organization, and they're going to use grant funds for the purchase of a truck and a refrigerated van to redistribute rescued food to people in need. And then similarly, Last Mile Food Rescue is another organization that works throughout the county rescuing food. And what's exciting about that one is they're going to actually reach out to new opportunities, new caterers, restaurants, people that have this food that can be rescued to feed hungry people. We have Queen City Commons, which is our only for-profit business on the list. They're a small female-owned business in Hamilton County, and they are really growing the food waste composting infrastructure in Hamilton County. So this grant helps to support them. And then finally, we have Teak and Farm, which is located in Mount Healthy, and this project, their project mainly focused on their composting, their small-scale composting on-site, and doing some composting training, and then also helping their Nourishing Families Director teach culinary skills, how to use surplus food, how to store food properly, that kind of thing. So I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Vice President Drehouse, any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. So this is good news coming out of the Solid Waste District. Thank you for working on this, Michelle, and thank you to the committee that brought forward the recommendations. This is a new thing for us. I think Karen Hurley was the Policy Committee member that suggested that we set aside 500,000 for this grant program to allow for all of this to happen at a very localized level to help keep food, organics, trash out of the landfill. I mean, the whole thing is to divert whatever's going into the landfill, out of the landfill. So these projects all hit the mark. Remind us, because I know there were additional organizations that applied for the money. Could you, I don't remember how many, and so the idea being that maybe in the future, while this is a first time for 500,000, more than we've done in the past, we were looking at, you know, can we afford to do even more than this in the future?
Sorry, I was counting how many we didn't fund. So we didn't fund 17 applications. We actually received 1.8 million in requests. That said, we are working with a number of these that we did not fund, who scored lower, to find alternative funding, find other ways that we could possibly support them. We do have a smaller grant program that can help some of these projects, but yes, I think that it was a test to see if we would get some large projects, and we definitely did. We had a lot of interest.
Yeah, so this was a pilot, and a very successful pilot.
Yes.
And so hopefully, we will continue this project and be bringing back an annual list for the Commission to approve of, because the Policy Committee approved of these recipients, and, you know, I just am very excited about this. Karen Hurley had this great idea, and so we are thrilled to partner with all these organizations to keep refuse out of the landfill. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question, Michelle, item 15, you said it was a for-profit company?
Yes, that's correct.
I was just wondering the rationale of choosing a for-profit.
So the grant was open to both for-profit and nonprofit, and the idea is improving the infrastructure for waste reduction, and some of that is for-profit businesses who are doing that, who are operating in this space.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you for your work on this, and thank you, Vice President Drehouse, who represents us on that board, and your work on this as well. And I think you gave us a heads up that this was coming, so we appreciate that. Okay, we've got others on the list.
Yes, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
So item number 17 is a resolution authorizing one position at the table of organization in the Department of Environmental Services. This is a part-time position that does the sampling and the transport of sample materials relating to the BioWatch program, which is a federally funded program to do air quality monitoring for certain hazardous air pollutants. And then we have multiple JFS items. We have two, 18 and 19 are report of actions of the JFS Director over those two months. We have item number 20, which is a contract for 183,000 for group home services with A Place for Hope. Item 21 is a contract between the Board, JFS, and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office for building security services at $750,000. Item number 22 is a single-source agreement with Lutheran Home Society, doing business as Genacross Family and Youth, related to residential treatment services for 160,000. Item number 23, we have a resolution authorizing the agreement with Public Children's Services Association of Ohio. This relates to the grant that was received related to workforce retention funding that has been allocated to JFS staff that we received from the state. And item number 24 is an agreement with the Southwestern Ohio Region Workforce Investment Board. This relates to the, this is actually a revenue-producing contract with, between, or for JFS to serve as the entity to operate the one-stop center, provide career resources to adults and dislocated workers. That's anticipated revenue of 3.2 million. I will say the Director Patton is here if there are any questions on those items, and I'll just wrap up here quickly. Under item number 25 is another agreement for fire hydrant services with the Village of Green Hills, where the County's Planning and Development Department will be repairing, taking on the job of hydrant repair services for Green Hills. And then we have one travel request or authorization request to travel at the county's expense with one employee from the Coroner's Office to Orlando, Florida.
Thank you. I'll start and then open up to my colleagues if they have any comments or questions with the items that you just read. I just want to say, item number 25, the Village of Green Hills, and having this agreement to help and assist them with their hydrant through our planning and development. We had another one for Elmwood, so I'm starting to see more places pick up. And again, like we said, one Hamilton County, so I wanted to highlight, we had highlighted Elmwood, now I want to highlight the Village of Green Hills. So I wanted to highlight that, that they're doing that, and I'm happy to see that we'll be voting on that today. Also, I did have, before I get to this item, I had one other thing on the, was it the grant? One more thing, looking at my notes. I'm glad you highlighted, item number nine was majority, the levies that were passed by the taxpayers are now putting those levy dollars to work, so we can continue to help in what it was intended to do. I do want to say on, it's not specific to, it's not specific to item number 20, but since we mentioned the word group homes, I want to ask Director Patton, who is here. We had an issue with the group homes, we had passed the money, like we're getting right past now, but the money was not getting to the group homes. We had a four-month delay in them getting payment. I was, I ran it to Mr. Joe Kelly and Tiffany Kelly, who own group homes, and they indicated to me that we are, they do, I guess, other counties, maybe they're smaller counties, but they were saying that we're the slowest to get paid, and they were giving me everything from a small-business perspective, a minority business, that, you know, it's hard to do four months or three months, and they said we're still behind. They hadn't been paid for December. I don't want to just get into their specific case, but that is an issue as we're funding today, like 183,000 for group homes. We think it's paid. Where are we with that? Have we corrected the system, or what needs to happen to correct it?
Sure. Madam President, thanks for the question. As I stand here today, I was not aware that there was a delay of that nature, so I'd be happy to take another look at that, but we put a lot of work and effort into making sure that we were staying as current as possible when this issue came to our attention last year. So I think we've done a really good job of making sure that we were getting contracts signed and getting the invoices paid on time, so I can certainly take a look at that and talk with our internal folks about where things stands as it relates to that. I do know that, again, with some staffing-related challenges and working through processing the contracts and having them reviewed by the prosecutor takes some time, but we want to obviously make sure that all of the vendors are being paid on a timely basis. So I'd be happy to take a look at any delays that still exist that are, you know, small businesses, group homes are confronted with, because, you know, we need every partner we can have in our community, helping the families that we serve consistently. So I'll be happy to look into that further.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I just wanted to, I said, man, we voted on this stuff, we're thinking it's paid, and they were also indicating maybe there needs to be a roundtable with you and them, but they, it wasn't, they're one representative, but they were saying others, of course, they call around, "Did you get paid?"
Right.
"No, I ain't got paid." "Did you get paid?" So he was saying that our paper system is antiquated, and I don't know if there's, if there needs to be something, we need to be notified of, if it's something you need
Sure.
From new technology. He said we have one of the most antiquated systems.
So it's interesting you mention that. I have a couple of meetings with prosecutors set up coming up soon, kind of talk about what the workflow looks like from their vantage point, from our vantage point, also the auditor, so we've sort of seen some, maybe some opportunities there. So I think there obviously should be some investigation, looking into how we might be able to streamline things. Again, it would be preliminary for me to speak exactly what that looks like, but I think there might be opportunities for us to investigate that a little bit further to make sure that the workflow is optimum, so that we can make sure that the vendors get paid. And we do meet with the vendors on a regular basis as a group, to talk about what they're experiencing, challenges that they're having, so they have an opportunity to voice those concerns with me, but I'll certainly ask about that and look a little bit more deeper into, if there are some slow-pay problems, we certainly want to try to resolve that.
Thank you, and if it's something we need to know or help, I don't know, you know, whatever we can do to help, if it's something we need to look at in our budget, I don't know, technology part, just let us know, and so we can be helpful as well to both you and Prosecutor's Office and
Thank you.
Auditor's Office.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas, you had something to ask?
Madam Chair, I was just going to say, you bring up a great point, because I was just writing down, who are the players? When you said Prosecutor's Office, that can slow it up. So you also mentioned about a flow chart.
Yeah.
So you get the hit when you come in here.
Right.
But there are other players, so you brought up a great point.
Well, yeah.
Look at how that goes, where the delay is.
Yeah, so I think there are a lot of partners that we work with. Obviously, we have to have the contracts reviewed by the prosecutor before we enter into an agreement. You all have to approve those contracts. We have our internal contracting staff, obviously, that prepares, writes the contracts, negotiates the contracts to the best of our ability based on what we're asking for as far as the service is concerned, and so there are several steps along that pathway that we depend on for those things to happen in a timely manner, so.
Vice President Drehouse, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and I've got nothing related to
Okay.
Any of the items on JFS. I too was going to highlight item 25 with the hydrogen, or hydrogen, hydrant repair. Yeah, another example, partnership out in one of the villages in Hamilton County. I was glad to see that they have come on board. I wanted to ask a question of the Administrator regarding item number seven. This is the item with the UC Economics Center for Educational Research on behalf of MSD. I just want to get a little more information. I pulled the item, but I still feel like I don't have a clear idea of what this is.
That is the, through the UC Center for Economics, that is information related to affordability in the community that we are using to inform our discussions as it relates to the consent decree and our discussions with the federal regulators.
Okay, so this relates to previous conversations we've had regarding all the projects that come before us with MSD and the affordability of the asset management, the consent decree projects, and how we do as much as we can, but relative to what the community can afford. Is that what this is trying to determine?
In general, it's not really, it's not really project-specific.
Right.
But it is more related to the community in general.
Right, okay, great. Thank you. Really important, I think. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
Commissioner Dumas, did you have anything on the other items?
No comments.
Okay, so, I will, oh, Director Patton, I'm sorry.
Just had a really quick update. Laura's usually on the line, so she has a lot more information about the contracts than I do, but the invoice for Kelly Services for December was sent to the auditor on January 23rd for payment, in that particular. 23rd for payment, and that particular question that you had about that, that invoice. So we've sent that over to the auditor January 23rd, so we would expect that to be paid shortly, if not already.
Got you. Okay. Well, it's good that we talked about the whole process. I guess with this item 20, when it says they, I guess they already have the contract, A Place of Hope would be the provider, and the contract part is done, so we approve $183,000. What's the next step? Does it go, where does it go once we pass it today?
I think the contract is just an agreement that you approve on behalf of Job and Family Services to enter into the agreement for the amount of that contract over the term for the contract. I don't know the exact term, but that would be for that term of the contract.
Okay. And then once they do it, they invoice you.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, item, let me get to my numbers now here. So one second. Item number five and seven through... Twenty-six. Seven through 26, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Any further comment? Okay, I'll make them...
Mary Mountie said that you all have a revised flyer in your email boxes about Teen Wellness Day to push out.
Okay.
She's, she's quick.
She's fast.
She's in the office working, so, yeah.
She is fast.
Thank you, Mary, for doing that.
Thank you, Mary. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.